Meeting will come to order, please rise, their pledge of the flag in a moment of silence. Mr. Reba, roll call please.
Mr. Benomo.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Mr. Fume.
Here.
Mrs. Kay.
Here.
Mr. John.
Present.
Mr. Mahalik.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Mrs. Scarsella.
Here.
And Mr. Zola.
Here.
Announcements of executive sessions were held as follows, January 5th, 2016, security personnel, January 11th, 2016, Security Committee on Personnel, January 19th, 2016, Personnel, January 20th, 2016, Budget Personnel, and January 26th, 2016, Personnel and Special Education Litigation. E., Public Announcements and Recognizations, Dr. Butler?
Mr. Yami Havna this evening, thank you.
Okay, ask public comment directed to the Board on Agenda Items Only, on Agenda Items Only. Mr. Fume?
We have Renee Fort first.
Thank you for letting me speak here this evening. I would like everyone on the Board and everyone in the room, for a couple seconds, to imagine a world with no music. When you get in your car or put on an iPod, you have no music to listen to. Or the Great White Way in New York City, one of the greatest cities in the world, not being able to see a Broadway show because our theaters don't exist, not hearing an opera singer in the Radio City Music Hall. Life would be very boring without the arts. Even in the Rocky movie, he didn't know that art existed in the art museum when his son told him about it. He wasn't aware of the history that was in that building. Right now, this year, we started the pilot program for the Fine Arts Academy. I ask, I know that was under consideration, that you keep this program going. Music is very significant in a community. It's very therapeutic in all avenues, in many different ways. I know me myself, I was in an accident, and a couple of weeks later, I went to our concert at the high school, and it lifted my spirits immensely. Music and fine arts, whether it's drama, acting, visual arts, everything is therapeutic and needed greatly in our community. To take that away from our students would be a travesty. Not everyone is a math major, not everyone is a science major, we wish we could be, but unfortunately, we aren't. We need the arts in our community. Arts brings communities together, and I think our community needs that right now. So we know that was one of the items that was being discussed, as was shown in our newspaper. I implore the Board to reconsider and think, hopefully, that it's going to move forward, because it is a wonderful program. Our band is making great strides forward, our chorus is measurable amongst the best choruses in the area. Our dance, our visual arts, we worked together with band this year. If anyone was at the football games, they made the beautiful backgrounds you saw at the games, and they were outstanding. It was a camaraderie between the students. The students of art were very appreciative to be part of our marching season by making the art. So I hope, from the bottom of my heart, that we consider moving this program forward and making it even better than what it was this year. You have a lot of students that enjoyed being a part of it, and hopefully, a lot of future students coming into it. And we'd like to broaden it and make it better. So please, again, from the bottom of my heart, I hope you voted accordingly and agreed to move our program forward. It could be one of the best in the States, and I'd like to see our art department rank right up there with the best athletic teams that we have. Thank you for your time.
Annie Stetz.
Hello, my name is Annie Stetz, and I'm a student at the Hazleton Area Arts and Humanities Academy. This past week, I heard that our program is going to be discussed at tonight's meeting. When I heard about this, I was shocked. The fact that our academy was possibly going to be cut was a surprise. This program is an asset to this school, and it also helps change the lives of many students. In the eighth grade, you were given two choices, the STEM school or the high school. Both are great choices, but what about students like myself who have other interests? What about the student who wants to be on that stage performing their art? What about the student who wants their work to be showcased at a famous gallery? Or maybe the student who wants their next book to be your favorite? The STEM school and the high school are great choices, but we need a place to shine. This program was just that. This program has given us a place to expand our talents and still get our work done. This program has given us a place to feel inspired, a place to learn about the things we love. The Hazleton Area Arts and Humanities Academy is a program that is worth the time and effort. Like Vincent Van Gogh said, "If you hear a voice within you say, 'You cannot paint,' then by all means paint, and that voice will be silenced."
Teresa Redwinski.
Hi, this is just to clarify, on seventeen, that Christine Weisaki, the eight-hour, is being hired as the cafeteria manager for the drums school, Christine Weisaki. And I would like the Agenda Two reflect that, that's the position that she's getting as a cafeteria manager, not just a cafeteria transfer. Seventeen, it's the drums.
So she's the drums cafeteria manager?
Yeah, she's going to be made the cafeteria manager, just so in the future, there's no...
Question.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Fume?
Maria Flowers.
Hello, my name is Maria Flowers. I am a junior at Hazleton Area High School, and this year, I was given the great opportunity to be a part of the Academy of the Arts. For me, it's all about timing when it comes to submitting my college transcripts and my resumes. Having the opportunity to do this, it's just outstanding. I get my foot in the door, it's on my transcripts as an honors instrumental class. So this is just absolutely amazing. I can't picture it getting cut. The experience is great, we get to do showcases, to show off our talents, show the public what we can do, and our fellow classmates. It's just great. Rigorous, it's very, very rigorous. It pushes me to be a better musician and just to be a better person. I get to expand my horizons as far as being a musician. I'm going to be majoring in music education with a minor in music technology and a focus in composition. So not only will this class give me a chance to work on any auditions that I have to work on, or just anything we're playing in band, but it also teaches me about music theory, music composition, technology, which I need to go into college. They expect me to have at least some prior knowledge to it, and without this program, I can't get it unless I pay extra money to go out of my way and get private lessons or extra classes. I just think that this program really focuses on those kids who aren't going to be technology majors or science majors. You know, it expands their horizons to see what else is out there besides, you know, being an accountant or something. So it just really has them dig down deep into their interests, and you can do what you love, and if you love what you do, then why not do it? So thank you for your time.
Dr. Childs.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm addressing the issue of hiring a security director of security, not the individual himself. I know Mr. Harry, I have a great deal of respect for him. My only hope for him, that I would express from a personal point of view, is that our previous director, for the first time, put the emphasis on enforcing the bullying problems, the bullying policies that we've had, and managed to take personal interest in making sure that we get rid of what I consider to be the most dangerous problem we have in our school, which is bullying. Okay, you can talk all you want to about people coming in with guns and so forth, if you look at the problems previously, it's been mostly the students who have managed to destroy schools. But what I would like to address at this point in time is not the person, but the policy. I read the article in the newspaper on Sunday, was very much disheartened to find that certain members of the Board had made up their mind about who was going to be the director without any kind of an interview process being held that encompassed the Board as a whole. I would hope that the Board will act as a whole, not that you'll be offering jobs to people before the rest of the Board even knows about the person being picked. This leads to everything from protectionism, which we've heard from teachers who said, "I can't be touched, I've got Board protection." It leads to things such as hiring people who may or may not be qualified, because they're my friend, they're my relative and so forth, they may not be the best person out there. And I'm hoping that you'll reconsider how you approach the subject of hiring. I think that it's not appropriate to have only part of the Board involved in a hiring as important as this. Thank you.
I would like to just take a second on that. I'm not sure, Dr. Childs, where you got your information from?
Just from the newspaper.
If you're reading just the newspaper article, but the entire Board, we were in conversation about this position from the minute that we got the letter of resignation. So the entire Board, and I think, you know, if you look up and down it, was involved in the decision on how to approach hiring a position. I don't believe you always have to put out an application process, bring in dozens of people who are wasting their time, most times, and I've seen it, I've seen you on the Board, Dr. Childs, and I watched the process go through, and I knew where it was going, knew where it was heading. So I'm speaking from experience here. Or you do like a lot of Fortune 500 companies do, and you go out and you recruit, you recruit the best person with the most qualifications for the job. That's what I think this Board did. And acting as a Board, as a unit, talking about it, and most, I think Marie was the only one that felt she was slighted in it, although is on the Security Committee, did sit through two meetings, committee meetings, including an hour-long meeting just on that issue, you know. So I think we did our due diligence, I think we did a justice to everybody in our schools. I think our students are going to be better, safer, I think our faculty's going to have a safer atmosphere to work in. So I conclude with that.
Well, since Mr. Zola wanted to bring me into it, now I'll have something to say. I did say...
Only because it was your article in the paper that he's referring to.
I did say, I did sit through the committee meeting, it was very lengthy. Mr. Zola brought up Mr. Harry, I have nothing personal against you, I don't know you, I'm sure you're a wonderful man. If you get this position, I will wholeheartedly support whoever got this position. But until tonight, we didn't see a resume. And that is the reason...
Nor did you ask for one, Marie. At the end of that committee meeting, I said to you and to everybody else at that meeting, what would you like me to do? Would you like to have Mr. Harry come in? Would you like a resume? And the people at the committee, and they're sitting right here at this table tonight, including you, said no. Go ahead and see if he'll accept the position. So please.
And I told you the next day that I could not support that, did I not?
But you said nothing at the committee meeting, right? So let's play the game.
It's still my prerogative, there is no game. It's my vote.
You got it, absolutely.
And it is not personal, you're making this personal.
Because you had the opportunity. If you would have said that night to do it, I would have happily have done that.
Did we bring a group of people into question?
It's time to...
No.
Let's move on, we don't need to play these games. I thought this, I thought these games were done, and this was a new board.
Mr. Fume, anybody else?
No, that's it.
Gee, approve the Board meetings, regular Board meeting, December 17th, 2015, Mr. Reba?
Need a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Any questions on the minutes?
Roll call.
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
And last one, Treasurer's report for December 20th.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
All in favor of approving the Treasurer's report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If I may respectfully, would we be able to move number 107 to number 1? I'm sure, I really would rather not keep the students in...
We're going to do it right now, all three of them?
Wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
At this point in time, we would like to remove from the Agenda 102, 103, and 107. 102, 103, and 107 will be removed from the Board, from the meeting. Okay?
Thank you, Mr.
Dr. Butler will explain the removal of number 107.
Yeah, with respect to our audience this evening, students, staff members, administrators, the Arts and Humanities motion that's on the agenda for this evening, just requiring more information from me, from Ms. Salvatore to the Board, so they have a full understanding of the program, its offerings, its strengths, many of which you spoke to tonight, students, we thank you very much for speaking. Please don't take the removal of the Agenda, remove the motion from the Agenda as a sign that it's not going to be considered moving forward. So again, we're just gathering more information and fully inform the Board of the program and its advantages moving forward. I fully expect that we'll see something on next month's agenda. So we do thank you for your support, thank you for being here and your comments this evening.
I can assure all you people, the program is not going away.
Absolutely.
It is not going away.
Absolutely.
Dr. Butler?
Thank you, Mr. John. So, starting the meeting with the curriculum instruction, approving items 1 through 7 with one motion.
So move.
Second.
Question.
Questions, anyone?
On number 7?
Go ahead.
The person recommended here, Catherine Frumpkin, district employee or...
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the 180 hours, when will that take place?
Well, that takes place outside of her contractual duties, Mr. Zola. In other words, during, well, I should say, perhaps during her preparation time, after school hours, before school hours, possibly even during the summer. It's an accrual of hours that takes a considerable amount of time, but absolutely should not usurp her main duties as a teacher.
And is she in that building with Mr. Lotella? Is it the same building?
Yes, she is, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Reba?
Numbers 1 through 7, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Special Education, ESL and Alternative Education, approving items 8 through 13 with one motion.
So move.
Second.
Any questions, Board members? Roll call, Mr. Reba?
Items 8 through 13, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Nutrition, approve items 14 through 17 with one motion.
Second.
Questions? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 14 through 17, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes, and we will add the cafeteria manager to...
Number 17.
Number 17.
Transportation, approve items 18 through 19 with one motion.
So move.
Second.
Questions? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 18 and 19, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Security and Career Center, approve items 20 through 28 with one motion.
So move. Second.
Just on a question, if I can. On, is there a time limit on the approval, Tony, of the nursing aid, is it?
That's number 29, we're going to vote on that separate because it was a new item.
Separate?
But we did put a date...
Okay, thank you.
Date range in there. Any questions on 20 through 28?
Roll call.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
29, recommend Board approve to retain services as an independent contractor from Gerolene D'Enzo at $31 per hour.
So move.
Second.
Questions? Mr. Reba?
Number 29, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Number 30, recommend Board appoint Heather Dale as the Hazleton Area Head Softball Coach at salary of $5,000.
So move. Second.
Questions? Mr. Reba?
Mr. Benomo?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Fume?
Yes.
Mrs. Kay?
No.
Mr. Mahalik?
Yes.
Mrs. Scarsella?
Yes.
Mr. Zola?
Yes.
And Mr. John?
No.
Motion passes.
Number 31, recommend Board approve the dispersment of funds to the sports shooting club.
So move.
Second.
Questions? Mr. Reba?
Number 31, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Facilities and Capital Projects, number 32, recommend Board require approval on all projects and purchases in the Maintenance Department at an amount of $2,500 or more after solicitation of at least three quid.
So move.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
32, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
33, recommend Board approve permission for Valley Elementary Middle School PTA to erect new...
So move.
Second. Questions? Mr. Reba?
33, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great job to them, for raising that kind of money.
Finance, number 34, recommend Board approve the adoption of the Preliminary General Fund.
Second.
Do we currently have a budget in place for this year?
By the state?
Yeah, by the state.
No.
Is it a little awkward?
They're working on one for next year already.
But I mean, isn't it awkward that we're here? Is this, is this a mandate that we pass a preliminary budget sometime within the next couple of weeks?
By tomorrow.
By tomorrow?
Yep. That's within the next couple of weeks.
Utterly ridiculous. And I will certainly not support this. We do not even have a state budget. How can we possibly move forward with a budget for next year? The money that we've received is not what we were expecting, is not what we built in to our budget. So what are we basing this preliminary budget on?
For state revenue, we use last year's numbers, which aren't set yet, but they're the numbers we use.
It's one of the most frustrating things I've seen in public education. They're holding students hostage, and I'm going to say that till it's done. And, of course, that's gone away because everybody's still getting paid, schools are open, it's ridiculous.
Any other comments?
Yes, if I might add, on a similar subject, the budget meetings, the public budget meetings have started in the district. We started them in January, I'm sure we posted it on the website, but just so the community knows, we welcome anybody from the community to come and sit in on these public budget meetings, so you can see how we arrive at our budget decision by the end of June. There's a lot of time and effort put into this by everybody. And again, we welcome the community to sit in on any of those public meetings that would like to sit in on them, and I'll give you the dates now. February 10th at 6:30, that's a Wednesday, they're all Wednesdays. March 9th, 6:30, again, a Wednesday. April 13th, Wednesday. May 11th and June 11th, 6:30, and they're all Wednesdays. Thank you.
Any other comments on 34?
Yeah, I'll make one more comment. The reason we're even discussing not being able to fund this amazing program for these kids is because we don't know that we're going to have it in our budget.
That's correct.
But we will fund that program, without question.
That's the dates that I have. I don't have a calendar in front of me, so if somebody...
June 11th is a Saturday.
Well, don't come on Saturday. You can come on Saturday, I won't be here.
The 8th and 15th in June are Wednesdays.
Then it's June 15th, all right? Thank you for correcting that.
And May would be May 11th?
That's a Wednesday.
I'm only as good as the information I receive.
Go ahead.
Number 34, Mr. Benomo?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes, because we have to.
Mr. Fume?
Yes, because we have to.
Mrs. Kay?
Yes.
Mr. Mahalik?
No, because we obviously don't have to.
Mrs. Scarsella?
Yes.
Mr. Zola?
Yes.
And Mr. John?
Yes.
Motion passes.
35, recommend Board authorize the business office to apply for referendum exemptions.
So move.
Second.
On number 35, just because we're applying for the exemptions doesn't mean we're going to use them, we did not last year, correct?
Correct.
It's just a policy that we do, so don't get everybody get excited or upset, doesn't mean we're going to do it.
Are there specifically exceptions that we're going for?
Typically, it's down to four, so two of them deal with debt service, which we won't apply for, the two that we'll apply for is a special ed exception and a retirement pieceers exception.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Reba?
35, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
36, recommend Board approve the Louisiana County IU 18 general operating budgets.
So move. Second.
On number 36, I discussed it with Mr. Reba the other day, it seems that we pay the most in the IU, we pay $36,000 more than the next highest school, which is Wilkes-Barre, and I believe we have about 3,000 students more, and we only have one representative on the IU Board. So, Mr. Mahalik, since you're on the IU Board, start the ball rolling that we get too.
I agree with you.
I mean, that's ridiculous, that we pay the biggest part, have the most students, and we have one representative. I don't think that's fair, and something should be done about it, and has to be done about it. Mr. Reba?
Thank you, Mr. Mahalik.
Any questions, I'm sorry. Mr. Reba?
36, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
37, recommend Board approve the tax lien sale for 2015 delinquent.
So move.
Second. Any questions? Mr. Reba?
37, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Approving items 38 through 47 with one motion.
So move.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 38 through 47, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Forty-eight, recommend board approve as per procedure number twenty-nine the rental policy to waive all fees for.
So moved.
Second. I just wanna point out, um, and more so for the, the newer board members. In our rental policy, it's set with the charges that we have to charge for our facilities in various different locations. We do get requests that, um, to waive all the fees sometimes, or waive the rental fee. We basically deny those at the administrative level and they're appealed right to the board. And I just wanted to point out in this one, just so you know, um, this is requesting all the fees, which means we're waiving the rental fee along with security and custodial fees.
Was this denied by administration?
We don't have the ability to, so we, we basically deny them, and then if, we have to charge the fees in administration. So if they're asking to waive the fees, these come to the board, and that's what procedure twenty-nine is of that policy.
So what are the fees for the security and cafeteria?
Maintenance.
Maintenance. Maintenance.
And maintenance?
I must be honest, I'm not familiar with this specific request, but, um, is Andre here? Do you know what this is? I mean, uh, we would charge based on whatever custodians would come out to work the event whenever it was being used, same with security. Um, the rental fee would be a fixed dollar number based if it's a nonprofit or, or a profit-making entity.
So who would pay for it? I mean, if we're gonna waive it, that means that.
The district just.
The district could have to pay for it.
Beats it, yes.
What are they using it for?
This is a annual music camp that Mr. Letella leads. Uh, it's very popular, very, um, well-received by our community. Uh, it happens down in the Drums area, Ms. Kay. And I believe the fees are for general cleanup, general cleanup and, um, uh, tidying up the area for the camp to run on a daily basis.
And is it a five oh one C three? Tony?
I can't answer that, I'm not sure.
It is.
It is?
Why?
I think that's a school district policy that you have them.
Now, this, this isn't the camp in the summer, this is their, I guess they're using the Hazel Township building on February nineteenth. Looks like it's one day.
Would be kinda be setting a precedent at, at this point.
Can. Can we put this off and you get back to us what the total cost is to the district?
We motion to table it maybe.
Problem is the, I don't know if our meeting is before that, that date that this is going to happen, um.
Before the new board members came on, maybe for the last two or three years, I said this policy should be reviewed, because almost every meeting, we're asked to waive something. So I don't even know why we have the policy for, because we're always waiving things. And I think that policy has to be gone over with a fine-tooth comb, and once it's established, it's established. And I think we have to take everything into consideration, but why should we have a policy if we waive it all the time? That's my opinion.
I agree, but I also, um, I don't wanna penalize the children. But I don't want to have a cost to the district for one, and then we set a precedence, and how do you give it to one and not to everyone?
Correct, yes.
We, we need to review this policy.
And I apologize for not knowing more about this request, but February nineteenth is a Friday, so is school in session that day?
Yeah, 'cause Monday would be the holiday, right?
Is Mr. Letella here?
Uh, no, he's not here this evening. I believe that is a school thing.
Yeah.
Can we?
This is after school, or, or when this is.
Can we table it, and we can always call.
We could have a special meeting and just for this one item, two weeks before a committee meeting or something. Wouldn't take long.
So, motion to table number forty-eight?
I'll second that motion.
Any questions? Mr. Reba, the motion?
All in favor of tabling forty-eight, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Ice habit, motion passes.
Forty-nine, recommend board approve the Drums Elementary Middle School top school agreement.
Second.
Questions?
Uh, now I know I missed the committee meeting, and I apologize in advance, uh, but this is the equivalent of dirt gate here, and I'm, what, what ended up happening here?
Mr. Stuster, would you like to explain that one?
With regard to the agreement that's before you for settlement of that, of that matter?
Mm-hmm.
It, it's something that we've talked about in executive session because of the litigious nature, and I'm hesitant to talk about it publicly until it's voted upon and approved.
Even though you weren't there.
Do you need an executive session to fill Mr. Mahalik in?
If you want a recess for that purpose, I'm happy to do it.
You know, you know, I'll trust the, uh, the majority of the board. We started late, I don't wanna keep people away, and thank you, Mrs. Kay, for that. Um, I'll go with the majority of the vote here.
Okay. Mr. Reba?
Number forty-nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Is there any other no votes besides Mr. Benomo? Ice habit, motion passes. For you, no?
No.
Number fifty, recommend board approve the West Hazelton Borough Tax Agreement.
So moved.
Second. Questions? Mr. Reba?
Number fifty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any other no votes besides Mr. Benomo? Motion passes.
Number fifty-one, recommend board rescind the motion approved at the November twenty-third of, uh, no, two thousand fifteen board meeting to approve the lease agreement with Verizon Wireless to use a district property for a wireless tower.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, just real quick, um, Mr. President, and, and I won't certainly, uh, again, try to grandstand, this certainly was a topic that, uh, I think brought out a lot of people, a lot of information. I, for one, knew very little about cell, cell towers until I was, uh, provided in detail some good information. Now, again, I, I only heard from a side that was opposing this tower, but it's all I heard, and not knowing a whole lot about these things, um, I gotta think that there was probably a law of validity in what I was reading and, and what was provided to me. Um, my concern is that, you know, we're a district that is to watch out for the well-being of our children. We, uh, I think we escaped a possible issue here down the valley, uh, but we do have these things in other parts of our property. And I have a hard time, because I became, you know, uh, pretty much outspoken about the, you know, about this down in the valley, that I, I could, I, I, I have to be outspoken about this, you know, twenty feet from our soccer field, from our, from our schools, uh, from a housing development. You know, kids running cross-country and track. You know, and we put it there. I'm not sure if I put it there would've voted, I hope I didn't, but it doesn't matter if I did or if I didn't. I still believe we have, as a district, uh, an obligation to all the people that live in Hazel Township to, um, to see what we can do to rectify that situation. So, I commend everyone. Mr. Zola, you did a tremendous job on fifty-one. The residents of the valley and all those, um, that spoke out and against this, but I think we can't stop there. We've gotta take it and make sure that all these things, and there's a place for them, I use them, as much as probably anyone, but not on our soccer field, now knowing what I know. And, and the people that I represent, I've gotta speak up for them. So, thank you, Mr. Zola.
Mr. Mahalik, I think you're absolutely correct. Had we known this in the beginning, it never would've been voted on, period. Um, thank God Mr. Gaitas brought to our attention, and we're well made aware of it. And I agree with you about over here on, by the bus garage, where there's a contract signed with that, and that would be up to your attorney to see what they can do. I don't think that anything can be done with it now, but that's for the legalese.
I think what we can do as a board, though, is, uh, develop a policy to eliminate future sites of, of school district properties being used for it. You know, and in that way, it just takes the question right out of it, you know, if we decide not to turn our policy and, uh, we, we could move ahead with that for next month.
And, and I am, again, I'm, I'm pleased with the way fifty-one is, is, you know, uh, being rescinded. Maybe at some point, we could even, uh, you know, have a, a meeting with a representative from Verizon, 'cause I now have a lot more questions. So, I, I'd just like to make sure that everybody in this entire district is as protected as they can be from the things that we, we're voting on, so.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Reba?
Fifty-one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Fifty-two, bills?
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
On the question, uh, Mr. Shemansky or Marquez, can you give me an explanation as to where this project after six months is? I mean, are we still waiting for stuff on this?
Which one?
We keep, we continue to pay our bills and then, and the project just keeps getting delayed, delayed, delayed.
Which letter? Which one is it? Which one are you talking about?
The Barry I, is it? Number C. Letter C.
Actually, we, 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 uh, uh, the co-official from, uh, City of Hazelton, we knew the project, the, the, uh, other requirements for.
Okay, so it's still not done?
We don't have the. We have to get him in there tomorrow to, uh, inspect the building and make sure it's, it's, uh, code. We might have it, so, uh, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Reba?
Fifty-two, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any, any no votes?
No on C.
And all of them?
On C.
No on C, yeah.
You have Mr. Zola, no on C, and Mr. Benomo, no on C. Any other no votes? Ice habit, motion passes.
Superintendent's agenda, rec, recommend board approve items fifty-three through sixty-six with one motion.
Second.
Any questions?
We are going to add that, um, person to the sublist for FISED?
Yes, sir, Mr. Reba. Correct. The name, Mr. Reba, is Nicholas Blanco. Physical education.
Any other questions?
On, on sixty-two, this is a hundred-and-fifty-hour internship of students from Luzerne Community College with, uh, Dr. Briggs. Is that, is Dr. Briggs here?
Yes.
How do you, how do you plan on, on, uh, working that Dr. Briggs? I mean, that's a, that's a long time with the person tailing you throughout the district. Is, is that how you plan on working it, or?
No, they're good at tailing me, they work in the registration department and the child, like county department. We, we're just starting our, each of our regis, uh, registrations, we said, we're actually, it's a complicated.
Okay. So they're actually gonna be, you're gonna have them doing a function? Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Reba?
Numbers fifty-three through sixty-six, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Approve item sixty-seven through eighty-one with one motion.
Second.
Any questions? Comments?
Uh, just again, quickly, Mr. President, obviously, um, this is the time of year where these, especially these next two months, where we'll see a lot of names that have been so influential to so many lives, uh, in our district, and it's, uh, you, you, you have a lot of excitement and, and, uh, you, you wish them the best. Uh, but yet, we know that we're losing a great, a great portion of our district with this, and, and, uh, we wanna wish them, on behalf of the entire board, I'm sure I speak, uh, wonderful retirement, those moving on to, uh, different positions, we wish them good luck. Uh, and obviously, for, uh, number sixty-eight, uh, I'm not sure, you're spending the, uh, that, that much time with her husband is much of a retirement, but I guess, we'll see how that works out for her. I'm sure she'll be subbing or doing something for us. But good luck to all these people.
And I would second what Mr. Mahalik said, except for number sixty-eight, I don't wanna get involved in that.
Any other comments? Mr. Reba?
Number sixty-seven through eighty-one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Approve items eighty-two through ninety-four with one.
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, please.
Comments?
On, um, some of the ninety, uh, ninety-one, are, are these, uh, currently employees of the district, or are they new positions?
A replacement.
Uh, states, the ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two.
I think these are replacements. Mr. Donahue, can you help me with those? Or Mr. Manfredi?
Manfredi, maybe we could.
Okay.
And, and, um, how are, how are the names being brought forward? I mean, what, what was the process, Mr.? Oh, so they are currently employees of the district? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Reba?
Numbers eighty-two through ninety-four, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Approve items ninety-five through one oh three.
So moved.
With one motion. Excuse me.
One oh one.
One oh one. Thank you. Mr. John, thank you.
Are there names in, on those, Mr. Bell, Dr. Butler?
We have a name for number ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
Yes, that's Michael Gablick, at the salary of forty thousand, eight twenty-four. Which is, uh, BA, step one.
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Any other questions? Mr. Reba?
Numbers ninety-five through one oh one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on one hundred.
Ice habit, noting, Mrs. Kay's no vote.
Number one oh four, recommend board approve the retirement of.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I have one comment on, I know Mr. Capice very well, and he obviously visited my building a number of times over the years as a basically doing deliveries. It seems like, I don't know how many years, uh, Mr. Capice was here, but it, quite a bit longer than I was in the district. I just consider him a really a great gentleman, and I wish him nothing but the best in his retirement, and I hope it's a long, healthy and happy retirement. So, Mr. Capice, good luck.
I would just like to, uh, to mention that, I had the opportunity to work with Mr. Capice in the, in the warehouse, uh, for a summer, and, uh, one day, he's driving down Broad Street in West Hazelton, and he, and the van he was driving, a district van, gets T-boned. I mean, takes the van, drives it off the road into a house, and, and when I got up to the scene, I thought, oh my God, you know, this can't be good. And, uh, boy, he bounced back, uh, came back to work, and everybody wrote him off. But he, he's one tough, uh, son of a gun and.
He's a one of a kind.
Unbelievable, unbelievable. So I, I wish him the best, and, and I'll tell you, uh, hard to replace people like that.
The accident wasn't his fault.
The accident was not his fault, no.
Someone ran a light, I think.
I should've said that, but, yeah, somebody ran the red light and hit him and drove him right across and into the house and. Unbelievable.
Gentleman, first class.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
One oh four, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
One oh five, recommend board approve a medical leave for.
Second.
Any questions, one oh five? Mr. Reba?
One oh five, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
And one oh six, recommend board approve.
Second.
Questions in one oh six? Mr. Reba?
106, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Mr. John, if I may, just make a general comment about the resignations and retirements that were on the agenda this evening. Many, many people have given tirelessly to our students, to our district, outstanding professionals as I have come to know them in the past couple of years. And I don't think 1,000 thank yous would be sufficient to acknowledge their service and what a tribute they were to our school district. Just like to say thank you from the superintendent's seat.
Any questions from the board before adjourn, public? Anybody from the public on any other items that's not on the agenda? Come up to the counter? You have three minutes, please.
Good evening, Anthony Stanziola from Foster Township. I have a daughter that's enrolled in the school. And my one question is, my daughter on the 14th, she filed a victim witness statement form and as of yet I have no documentation that it was filed, no incident report number.
What school? Where did she go to school?
The Career Center. Now, I have a copy, a blank copy of the victim witness statement form and there's a block there for the incident number. Apparently this form is duly promulgated because it has a number. It says a form, SEC-VWS-23, with a revision of 1 of 2009. The fact that my daughter's statement was, did not receive an incident number, it concerns me. I mean, are these forms properly filed and documented where maybe a month, two months, a year later, someone from Harrisburg could come and maybe audit these forms to see what the resolution was? I think this is, apparently there should be some kind of policy, regulations on how this form is supposed to be filled out. Could it be that this is somehow connected with federal regulations? I don't know how we connect the dots down the road with federal grant money and so on. So I'd like to know if sometime, she filed a complaint on the 14th and I'd like to know if the, someone from the school board will send me a letter giving me an incident report number and their resolution.
January 14th?
Yeah, 14th, yes, of this month she filed it.
Mr. Hacken, are you aware of this?
What happened is a teacher dropped, was my phone, my daughter, a teacher dropped her phone and it was damaged. So I went through, I had a talk with a few people and I didn't like the answers I was given. So before I seek any other avenues outside the school, I need something from the school as far as would it incident number and their determination and then I can move on.
And sir, if I may, sir, I'm here, I'm over here.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right, it's hard to tell where the voices are coming from.
Yeah, sorry.
I did receive your letter, sir, and I've read it in its entirety and I was out of the state, lost in my family for four days and your letter is front and center on my desk and, sir, I will get back to you tomorrow. But I have read your letter to, in full and I do appreciate you sending that to me, sir.
One other question, am I, sometimes when you're trying to look into-
Not finished.
I mean, sometimes when you look into, you want to look into a department's like rules and regulations, like they say it's confidential, there's some kind of, you know, blockage as far as with the sunshine rule. But I'd like to know, to me, the name of the form, it says for a student, a victim witness statement form. I mean, especially what gentleman was talking about bullying. I think these forms should be filed, documented and, you know, what, maybe later on with statistics for someone else to, you know, maybe glean for information.
Mr. Stanziola, I'll just say that the form that you're holding in your hand was developed a number of years ago and I was still Director of Security for the district.
Yes.
And at that time, the forms were used to take a statement from a student in reference to either a complaint, if they're a victim of something, or if they witnessed something occur. That statement would become part of the official report from the school district. We called it at that time, an incident report and I just can't answer if that's still the way it's being done. But that became part of that incident report. That incident report was kept on file and actually, if it met the criteria, was reported to the state then through that reporting system. So, if, Mr. Hacken is here, did you say?
Yes, he's been in the back.
Mr. Hacken, would you, is it still work that way or can you explain to Mr. Stanziola? Would you mind standing up, please? So maybe you could come over or at the end and get his name and number and contact him?
Thank you very much.
All right.
I appreciate it.
Look, Charlie.
Thanks, Mr. Stanziola.
Thank you once again for the opportunity to stand up here and speak to you all. I'm requesting that in light of three situations within the past year in which a number of students were excluded from school because in these cases either chickenpox or mumps. Two of those cases at least were bogus, as it turned out, excluding a number of students from school under these circumstances. I would ask you to consider the idea of asking the medical director for the school district as a pediatrician who is experienced, take a close look at the index case that's causing children to be dismissed from school. Or is the, again, the situation is that the diagnosis is reported to the Department of Health in Harrisburg. Department of Health gets back and says, okay, we recommend that everybody who's not had two varicella vaccines be excluded from school. In this case, it was about 100 students who were excluded for a period of three weeks. Now, that disrupts that student's education, but further, more than that, it disrupts the entire school. And that's simply not appropriate unless you're really honest to God you have a case of chickenpox. And the medical director is capable of determining that, as I say, last year's version turned out not to be chickenpox at all. Okay, Department of Health has been very unhelpful with this, State Department of Health. I asked them to please step in, ask their public health nurse to be involved. They said, no, anybody with a white jacket who sends in a report that there's a child with varicella is going to be believed for that purpose. Well, it turned out that the gentleman who reported this had no idea what varicella looked like. He's a nice young man, but he's never seen varicella. Okay, and so what happened is you had 100 kids excluded for no good reason. So I'm asking you, now, looking from the point of view of the medical director, he's very, very reluctant to step in and look at somebody else's work unless there's a mandate coming from this board that says, hey, guess what, this is part of your job. Okay, and that can, at least it can confirm, or it can deny, it can keep kids in school or if you want to send them out of school, that's fine. But whatever, but it should be based on what's real, not what's on, not what's supposed.
So if the school did that, doc, and we make them go to another physician?
Yep.
Would the school district pay for that or would the parent, if it's a directive from us?
I think you would end up paying, again, my feeling here, Clarence, is that the, as long as it's between a doctor and a child, if you've got a kid with an abscess, you take care of the abscess, that's it, nobody gets excluded. Once you start excluding hundreds of students and they're missing, then it becomes the school district's problem. Okay, and it would not be the parent that paid them, it would be the school district, but the school district already employs these physicians. They employ them for everything from sports physicals to checking, I know that the current director gets paid a lot of money in order, not a lot of money, he gets paid money in order to go through the forms for people who are getting OT and PT and that sort of thing. Okay, so he gets paid money for that. So what I'm saying is that this is a probably rare but needed expense that the school district needs to assume in order to assure that there's continuation of class for all students in the district.
Just want to clarify that, doc, that's all.
No, no problem.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please, your name and address?
Jack Oliveri, I'm from Shurkelo, Pennsylvania. My daughter attends the Arts of Humanities. Just a real quick, just want to thank the board, it's the first time I've been to a school board meeting. We've homeschooled our children and we heard about the Arts Humanities. We came forward to, you know, talk with the principal and so forth and we're quite impressed. And so halfway through the year, I'm really impressed with the Arts Humanities program and I feel like the Hazleton School District really stepped up and enhanced the education experience for the kids in the Hazleton area. And I would, you know, with the STEM school and, you know, really, you know, really embrace that theory. When you got a, when you have a school district that's so large with so many kids, you know, really giving them some opportunity to find where they fit in. My daughter really loves the school and she's doing really well and great teachers. I'm really impressed. And I want to thank you guys for all your hard work. Definitely a tough agenda, tough job, so I applaud you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Kay would like to have the last word?
I just want to say that on the first meeting, we had Mr. Watcher come and say that he secured a grant for the alternative ed program. And on Thursday, they're going to present the check to the alternative ed program for $2,000. So that's a positive thing for the district. It's nice to sometimes acknowledge the positive things that happen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Meeting's adjourned.